All right, so looking at the agenda for the August 28th Planning Commission meeting, number, agenda number, agenda item number one is agenda changes. Are there any agenda changes?
I wasn't at the last meeting, but I have the new ski codes that I was assigned to review. We can talk about those now, or if people want to talk about that. I know you talked about it last time, so I just wanted to throw it out there and see if.
Okay.
I'm good either way, but it depends on what everyone else wants to do.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know, well, there might be time when we talk about, go through the design standards, or maybe at our next.
Yeah, you can put it under agenda item number four, and take it up then if there's time during that agenda item.
Beautiful, thanks, we will do that. Next item is public comments for non-agenda items. Are you all here for Ralph's presentation? Okay. Okay, so.
And maybe, maybe you could introduce yourself, so Kate can get your, your name in the minutes.
I'm Steve Jero.
Matt Jero.
John Lo.
Thanks guys.
Mary Jo Burris, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, and welcome. Okay, so let's go ahead with, with Ralph's presentation.
All right, so you can see the fine print, right there.
Maybe 20 years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, it might, might be helpful.
It doesn't matter.
Dim the lights, perhaps.
Yeah, may, maybe.
Yeah.
People don't mind.
Yep, does that help? And we could go, we could go all the way.
Yeah.
Even better.
How does this thing work, Alex?
Oh, sorry, so it's this button here that you can't see. It does not advance, but it will give you the laser pointer. So just point at me, or give me a head nod, or say something when you want me to advance this slide.
Okay, and advancing the slides is on you.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So for the last little while, I mean, after Julie Campoli and Faith Inglesrud were here, I thought, given the fact that we were having this discussion about design standards, you can read this at your, at your leisure, I can send it to you as well, I won't read it all, but I thought it would be, you know, they showed a lot of images having to do with vibrant, I guess that was a commonly used word, sort of village center, you know, in part.
Just because the camera's probably going to want to look at Ralph a little bit.
All right, so you know, how do we, it seems somewhat mysterious in certain ways, but how do we create that kind of, this is a wonderful place to live, this community, but to say that it has an identifiable center, or a sort of heart of the village, would be a bit of a misnomer, I think. And in this era where we're sort of expanding, the Village Growth District, how do we, in a sort of planning terminology, how do we work towards creating a place in our community that really does feel like the heart and pulse of, of our town? And that's not a simple thing, I think. I'm also fascinated by some of these presentations we've had over the years, by these folks that have shown us the methodology and result, in some cases of more of a form-based code, and, you know, trying to construct effective regulations that make for the kind of community center, or heart of our village, that many of us might enjoy having. And this is really just, you know, I'm sure Steve thinks I'm picking on him, but this is really sort of a case study, it's kind of raising some issues around a particular piece of land, for some good reasons, I think. And I think it might have some constructive impact on some of the design regulations, or rules that we're trying to write as a group. So anyway, I took it upon myself to just say, okay, let's, let's have a look at things. These are just my observations, I guess you could say. Maybe you could go to the next one, Alex? So this is, you know, more or less the core of our town currently, you can see the elementary school on the lower left, this is, west is up, and on the right, I mean, it's helpful to get the scale of things, or the distances involved, and compare them, say for example, with other communities. And you see the two red dots, one is more or less down there by, on the lower left, by the restaurant.
Papa Nick's.
Papa Nick's, and on the upper right, it sits right across the street from the drugstore. And if you were to walk along 116, you know, that route, at an average pace, you know, it's about three miles an hour that most of us, when you're not power walking, take, that's, that distance is about 4,300 feet, getting close to a mile. And yet, we're talking about expanding the village in this direction further, and as you know, it sort of also goes down towards Buck Hill Road here. So, and we're doing a lot of talking about bicycle and pedestrian movement, and making that simpler within the core village area. And, you know, on average, this takes about 16 minutes to walk that distance. You can go to the next one, Alex? And more or less oriented the same way, this is the Village Growth District, you know, as it's currently configured. This is the kind of north, northwest area, this is the northeast, you know, this is close to the Buck Hill Road intersection right here. Map's pretty much oriented in a similar configuration. And so, rather than say dwell on some of these greenfield areas, you might call them, I started to think, well, let's, let's more or less go to the center of town, geographically at least, which is that big red blob, and, and see what might, might constructively occur there. So you want to go to the next one? So a lot of this was also looking at other towns, you know. This is Bristol, you know, you can see down in the valley, down here, here's the river. This is more or less the main street section of Bristol, right here. This is the grocery store in the back, the drugstore over here. This is more or less a contiguous block along Main Street. And from this red dot to that red dot, here's the Bristol Town Green, the old school, there's a church, I think, over here, various other sort of community resources along this stretch, there's a bank. But I was just wanting to compare, you know, scale and distance in some of these existing communities, and, you know, that felt pretty good to most of us. You know the main street of Bristol, it's got angled parking on both sides of the street. It's a pretty wide street, actually. And then it has a fairly extensive area, say, in back of, you know, it serves the grocery store back here, and the drugstore, and a pretty good-sized green. But anyway, this, just for reference, this is about 1,000 feet. You can go to the next one. And for context, this is the Church Street Marketplace in Burlington. We're not Burlington by any means, but it's interesting as a, as a point of reference. This is the four-block-long, you know, the church sits right here, the Unitarian Church. There's more or less another little block that's kind of been added, south of Main Street. But this four-block stretch is about 1,500 feet, so another 500 feet on top of what I just showed you in Bristol. And again, average person walking, not too vigorously, you know, that takes about six minutes to walk. You want to go to the next one, Alex? So then, you know, we'd been on a little tour of Virgens, and I thought, let's have a slightly more careful look at that community, and we all made observations, you know, of our little visit there. The center of Virgens is about a three-block length of the street. It's also, much like I just showed you in Bristol, it's about 1,000 feet in length, or, you know, three and a third football fields. And the center, you know, there's a town green along it, there's a mix of civic functions, variety of building styles, sizes and height. Most of these buildings in, along this stretch of Main Street, you know, they play pretty much by the same rules, proximity to the street, sidewalks, ramps, the way on-street parking works, I think it's, again, angled parking on one side of the street, and parallel parking on the other. And the scale of Virgens Center, you know, it varies a little bit. Most, most buildings are roughly two stories, there's a few one-story buildings in there, but there are several that are three, four, and five. And certainly some of the civic buildings are a little grander than that, the Opera House and the library are good examples. And while sidewalks, you know, and places to walk are pleasing in that community, this is definitely a Main Street thoroughfare. And if I were a bicyclist, or even a pedestrian crossing that street, it's a car-dominated circulation route, much like Route 116, Virgens has a Main Street that's often overwhelmed by vehicles. There's a kind of a difference there, you know, Virgens Center, that, that whole proximity to the Otter Creek and the falls is obviously a very pleasant, but that connection to the sort of, some of the natural features of the land are kind of interesting. You know, we observed the Main Street sort of differs a little bit from side to side. You know, you've got most of the commercial stuff happening on one side of the street, and most of the civic stuff happening on the other side of the street. It's not pure in that way, but that's kind of an interesting thing. And then backing up the Main Street, a little like Bristol, you know, there's a grid-like pattern of residential streets and homes of varied scales, and these, you know, basically function as sort of the arteries that feed Main Street. You want to go to the next one, Alex? So you'd think I'd calculated this, but it wasn't the case. So here are the three main blocks of Virgens. Here's the town green that we walked around. This is the Opera House, right here, where there's that bend in the road, and this is the Bixby Library, right here. So there's about three blocks. Black Sheep Restaurants down here, that sort of bigger structure that we were kind of looking at from the park is over here. And that also is about 1,000 feet, or it takes you about four minutes to walk. Next one. And, you know, you can see, that's that one building on the corner by the, by the green. It's three stories. The one next door is as well, sits pretty close to the street. The porches sort of mitigate the proximity to the street in some ways. These are more, you know, 19th century buildings, for the most part. This is a bank that sits opposite that building, and as you might recall, there was a, either a fire or something, and there was a one-story building between this and the next structure, next. This is another Main Street building, you know, not quite three stories, but somewhat. Most of these are more traditional structures, there's not much in the way of contemporary building in town. And this is really one of the back, along some of the back, back streets that I was talking about, this is a duplex, sort of federal-style, probably, you know, 1840, 1850, that particular building. Next. So back to Heinsberg, you know, zeroing in on this sort of central location was sort of where I ended up, really just focused on the east side of the street, for the most part, not really looking too much at the other side of the street. Next one. And here again, you know, I mean, from the Mechanicsville Road to Commerce Street is about 1,000 feet, which, you know, from a comparison standpoint, I think is, was informative for me, you know, because this is still, I think, when we view it, a fairly modest section of the Main Street of our town, and yet, you know, that's 500 feet less than Church Street, and about the same as the main commercial portions of Bristol and Virgens. And you can see is the Obashan's Mall over here, the mobile station, the fire station, Drew's Metal Works over here, this is the canal going through right here, a variety of different activities going on. I think this is Dark Star here, and this is sort of the line between this area and Lot 15 on the other side. The Middlebury Bank is just down the way here, about where my cursor is. Want to go to the next one? So I spent a little time just looking at some of the historic patterns, you know, and sizes of buildings, and just how buildings are placed in relation to the street, obviously. This is around 1900, there was a church, this is basically very close to the intersection of Silver Street, right here, so this is more or less the site of the elementary school, right here. This is the high school, I think it'd been moved, as I understood it, it had been moved at that point. Hart and Meets sits across the street, so the road takes a swing and starts heading north in this direction. Next. This is Lantman's circa 1900. You're starting to, you know, I was also sort of looking at, what makes you like something, you know, what makes you feel good about something? And, you know, like the width that Lantman's presents sort of on the street, you know, it's about 50 feet. This is pretty close to being a three-story structure, there's a little bit of illumination here in the freeze. Next, please. And you have a lot of these Italianate-style structures, you know, we're sometimes averse to flat roofs, but really, a lot of these, especially when you're trying to keep the weather off people coming in the doors, you know, serve a slightly more urban function, I guess you could say. So this is the west side of 116, the old little library, you know, used to be right in here. This building right here is this building today. So I'm looking a little bit at just the sort of scale of that structure, and how it presents itself to the street. Next, please. So these are a couple of others. This is where, what's it called, the?
Twice as Nice.
Twice as Nice is right down here. This is again, sort of a, an Italianate kind of building. This was quite a popular commercial style in the late 1800s, you know, 1880, 1890, fairly common. And this building a little further south is somewhat the same, it's kind of a hybrid, two, three stories. So I'm kind of looking at that dimension, and thinking, you know, what happens if we try to replicate that in some fashion? Not that you can always mandate that, but some of the things that we were looking at over the last several months have sort of talked about frontage, and, you know, if you have a lot that the building, you know, takes up a certain percentage of that frontage, in order to be somewhat effective. You want to go to the next one, Al? And, you know, these aren't, these aren't sort of, these are kind of old lessons in some ways, I mean, back when I got started as an architect, we did a restoration on Main Street of Grass Mount, it's a UVM building, most of the alumni and development offices are housed in there, and then, you know, about 25 years later, we did this dormitory for Champlain College, and they're actually, one of the things we looked at was just sort of the scale of this building. And this is not the actual sort of Main Street elevation, but it's similar. And then this building sat right next door, and it was obviously going to be a much bigger building, it's a dormitory for Champlain. So we basically took the, roughly the dimension of Grass Mount, and broke this building up into three parts. And so you had one of these on either ends of the building, just as a measure of, okay, how do you make an adjoining building feel somewhat at home in a somewhat historic context? Because that's certainly what Main Street in Burlington is, say for example. You want to go to the next one? This is a little more radical, say for example, but sometimes, you know, it's always interesting to hear conversation in here, you know, we, we are sort of wedded to older times, and the way we made buildings in the 1800s, but I don't think it's always the way that we should be thinking necessarily. Like, these are two probably 20th century blocks, I suspect, late 1800s, early 1900s. And then here you have this insertion of something that's quite different, a much more current building, not necessarily better, but obviously doing some things that these two structures are not necessarily able to do, you know. You've got sort of a hole poked right through it, right here, and when you get up a little higher, it starts to break down, it starts to provide some balconies and upstairs spaces that, you know, could conceivably be pleasant, and obviously, the building's a whole lot more transparent than either of its neighbors, so. And you can imagine, I mean, historic preservationists would say that this is perfectly appropriate, you know, to try to duplicate this style 100 years later and put something opaque between it, might not necessarily be appropriate, so. But that's sometimes a matter of opinion. Next. So, of course, I got this screwed up a little bit, and this, this might be where we sort of, well, just for reference, here you go again, these two red dots, Commerce Street, this is probably going to shock you guys, but this is looking at, you know, basically, I think the Drews own most of this land, that Quonset Hut sits here, and it's really having a look at, all right, how might this particular parcel of land in 25, 30, 50 years evolve, and what kinds of, rules is too strong a word, but how might the zoning sort of, if it was deemed that this was a direction to go in, actually support something like this? Now, in this particular case, so there are two, there are two examples that I'm going to show you. And this is Lot 15, right down here, this is where the proposed Hannaford Store is going to go, this is Dark Star, right here. All the existing buildings are in this kind of yellowish tint, and not all of them are on there, but for the most part. And here's the canal winding up through here, here's that storage building back here. So I just looked at setting these back from the street somewhat, although the existing Obashan's Mall, which basically does a reverse L of what I'm showing right there, that setback is about the same, say for example, along this front. So here's 116, here's one way into this, here's another way into it. I'm even showing some other things, say for example, between Dark Star and the Obashan's Mall, there might be access. This is radical, but even thinking about a connection across, over onto the Mechanicsville Road here, this is where the little pedestrian bridge is right now, down there. And all of these buildings, you know, they vary a little bit in size, with all these kind of crevices between them, I'm starting to suggest here, at least, that, you know, these buildings are somewhat permeable. The width and scale of these structures, you know, is probably a little like some of those Italianate buildings that I showed you, that we have further on down the street. There's nothing that says, say for example, if you had a two or three-story structure here, that the upper floors might not go somewhat contiguous. In other words, this void happens only at the lower level. There's a fairly significant sort of pedestrian walk or path along this side, and in this particular instance, there's a kind of service lane, a minimal sort of two-lane, two-car lane, where you can come in here, get dropped off, go back behind the building and park, and then, you know, landscaped and potentially sort of a bike path right along the street with, you know, conceivably even parking on the other side of the street. Now, maybe go two slides further, three slides further, that one, right here. So this is sort of a profile through 116 at that point. The Drew Metal Workshop is over here on the left. This is the actual travel path of 116, right here, it's about 24, 25 feet wide, right there. And the profile through this is such that, this is that service lane I was talking about, it's 18, 20 feet, tree belt of some kind, eight feet on both sides of the street, parallel parking on the west side of the street, and on the east side of the street, there's a sort of a bike pathway, right here. There's a pretty substantial little apron, and then, you know, my, my sense would be that while this might be some kind of a build-to line, that might be somewhat of a flexible line, you know, it could go back, it could be undercut to some degree, this shows sort of a three-story structure, you know. That gets awfully close to our 35-foot height limit, say for example, right now, so there might be something that we consider, you know, maybe if you go higher than a certain height, that there's a requirement to step that back somewhat. The, the sort of advantage to this, in some respects, is obviously, there's a little more in terms of just trafficked pathways for vehicles, which isn't necessarily desirable. But it does start to set, say for example, you know, this was some retail space down here, this was some kind of commercial floor, housing perhaps, and this is some housing on the upper level. You're starting to get enough distance between you and, say, the busier parts of 116, that you're starting to feel comfortable living up here, not to mention the views that you would have, you know, looking towards the west. So that's, that's one profile. I can't claim that I know what I'm doing when it comes to this sort of stuff, there's some other people, you know, that are a lot more capable when it comes to this sort of thing. This is really just sort of trying to stir some conversation, I guess. So maybe go back one, back two, maybe, the other way. So.
This one develop, or this one?
That one, right there. So this one's a little different, the idea is somewhat the same, I mean, both of these, it goes without saying, you know, are fairly intensely developed. You can tell by the pattern across the street, that, you know, the kind of density, especially if you start thinking, you know, two, three, maybe even four stories. The yellow, you know, is mostly, whoopsies, the yellow is mostly new structures, okay? So, so I'm presumptuous here, I'm, just like in the prior one, Obashan's, that whole mall right now sits there like that, it's a one-story structure, you know, thinking far ahead, I'm thinking, hey, this is a much more intense, and much more dense kind of structure, perhaps same kinds of uses, but with some upper stories, say for example. There isn't too much difference here, I mean, these are set back, they're probably a little closer to the street, not much though, five feet perhaps, there is no service lane here. In this particular instance, we've just got angled parking along 116, we've got parallel parking on sections of the other side of the street, and we've got sort of a multipurpose path for bicycles and pedestrians sort of moving up and down closer to the buildings, this sort of a nice landscape buffer. I'll show you the same kind of profile for this one that I did before. You know, it's always interesting to kind of look, you know, I think Richard Watts was asking, well, gee, where could we have a good bus stop, say for example? Well, here's one location, say for example, here's another. The street pattern here is somewhat the same, you know, this kind of back alley and different ways to get in and out. A lot of this develop, you know, depends a little bit on just sort of what happens with the proposal for Hannafords, you know. Obviously, you can start to see there's some two-sided possibilities there, although I think the Hannafords building, this is pretty much the backside of it. There's about 140 cars back here, say for example, so especially in this era where we're starting to think, hey, we're not going to use cars as much, or we're going to use them a little more judiciously, one could argue, well, I just thought I'd show, hey, what's, what's kind of possible. And, you know, the scale of these buildings are somewhat similar to what I showed you before. And, you know, the scale of these buildings are somewhat similar to what I showed you before on the other one. The only thing that I started to think about a little bit here was on the backsides of some of these retail levels, there might be some at-grade level living units. They might be modest in size for the elderly with little backyards. Again, you know, you can sort of poke through the buildings at certain key locations. This does the same over here. And as you can see, I was tempted to sort of carry the idea of this sort of right around the corner. And I think that's sort of also an interesting conversation, you know? Right now, Dark Star is set back like this. I'd suggest that, you know, the kind of more of a street fundage like you have with the Bank of Middlebury is maybe perhaps a little more appropriate for how Commerce Park starts to grow over time. You want to go one, I think, two back, maybe? I'm sorry.
You want the streetscape?
This one. This is really the profile of the scheme I was just talking to you about. So this shows, again, one sixteen, the sort of two travel lanes, some notion of parallel parking on the west side of the street and angled parking on the east side. That takes up a little more depth, but, you know, you get a little more in the way of capacity, I think. It's interesting, you know, I've been in some cities in the west or even some smaller communities in the west where when we angle park, we pull in nose-first, and, you know, it's, you're committing hairy-carry by backing out of that spot. In Austin, Texas, you go past the spot and you back in so that your nose is sticking out into the street. So the angled parking actually happens in reverse. It's definitely something worth looking at. Because now you're sitting in the driver's seat and you can see what's coming, as opposed to the typical angled parking that makes everybody so nervous. So in this case, you know, yeah, tree belt between the parking and some kind of multipurpose path for bicyclists and pedestrians. And then sort of what I'm calling kind of the little building front apron that's probably going to vary in dimension depending a little bit on what kind of activity goes on there. And in this case, you know, I'm showing sort of a four-story structure, but again, the notion of kind of stepping back a little bit from the street. So, you know, nothing sort of radical here, especially if you look more at the long term. You want to advance a little bit? I mean, go to this one, say, for example. I mean, it's interesting. When we've talked about design standards, we've sometimes talked about materials and scale and size and all that sort of stuff. And I think, you know, the sort of more contemporary language is not necessarily something we need to be afraid of. In fact, you know, frequently sort of neighborhoods spring up. If you go back in sort of architectural history, just about any style that evolved was met with rejection by ninety percent of the population. And their opinions of that style, whatever it might have been, the Greek revival, federal, whatever, softened over time. And as the landscaping matured and it became part of the fabric of your community, then, you know, it was something that you said, hmm, you know, I'm comfortable with this now. I'm not putting it all out well, but... So, you know, this, when we have conversations about sort of like writing rules such that we mandate a sort of period architectural styles or materials or window trim or that sort of thing, I think that's maybe turf that we might not want to tread on that heavily, you know? Like, this is a little housing project in New Orleans. You want to go to the next one? I'm getting more extreme here, but this is all residential work. I mean, it's a nice New England white, you know? It's metal siding. I'm not necessarily suggesting, hey, this is appropriate in our community, but, you know, you can take a somewhat less affair. It's the scale of the buildings that I think is really something that we should be heeding and, to the extent that we can, writing rules for, not necessarily architectural style. You know, if I asked you, like, I was adjudicating some competition a little while ago, and somebody had reproduced an eighteen-hundreds fire hall, and, you know, it was being lauded as a wonderful building. Well, can you imagine if I showed up, you know, and presented you with an eighteen-hundreds fire engine? You know, and said, here, here's what we're going to go with this year, you know? And you would think we were completely nuts. So I think remaining for us as a group, or us, you know, you can't mandate this sort of thing, but being somewhat open-minded about more progressive ways of making things, especially when we're talking about energy standards. You can't fly by the same old seat of your pants, you know, in many respects when it comes to that sort of thing. Could you go to the next one, please? Pontificating now. So even that little building on the left, which, you know, most of us might say, oh, shucks, downtown Heinsberg? No, I don't think so. But insofar as scale and proportion and width, it's certainly not a permeable building, you know? So anyway, that's about it. Just a little exploration in one part of town. I am sort of a little more emboldened than, you know, I was when I listened to all those people talk about form-based code and sort of how difficult it was and how we could clearly not handle that sort of thing, and we'd need an outside consultant, we need to pay them a lot of money to do this. I'm starting to think that that's not necessarily the case. I think if we especially, you know, there are many parts of town where development is sort of underway, some of these new districts, greenfield areas, I guess you could call them, where there's stuff happening, and it's hard to jump into the middle of that at this point. But there are certainly other parts of our community that are important parts of town. And I think the notion of looking at what those places are going to become over the next, you know, ten, twenty, thirty, forty years is a perfectly valid exercise for us as a planning commission and stuff.
Well, thank you. I, um... You know, Heinsberg doesn't really, we don't have a concentrated commercial strip. I mean, it's starting, you know, bits and pieces like behind Kinney's. You know, you can see some commerce moving, you know, commercial moving into certain areas. But to have a strip that you know is going to be commercial, retail primarily, with maybe some office and above residential. I mean, that's the kind of mix that I think is really intriguing and attractive to a lot of people. And what you have, it partly mimics what's going on in Bristol, where they have the pull-in parking, retail, restaurants, office, residential, all of it in that a thousand feet, you said it was about? And then, in addition of the pull-in parking, the parking behind, and they've recently redone the backs of some of those buildings where, you know, restaurants can have a few tables or have a little green space behind there. I think that's a really appealing kind of development.
Yeah, Ralph gave a slightly more abbreviated version of this to Maggie and I and Mitch. My thought was that the discussions that you've been having about design standards, you know, we'll continue to move those forward, but to envision what might happen for more intensive development in an area that would be redeveloped, not a greenfield development, but would require redevelopment, might give you some idea about where these design standards could go and be applied outside of just a green field, where it seems like it's a blank canvas. So it's not necessarily that you need to develop a build-out for this part of town per se, but know that you want the zoning to allow for more intensive uses, more value-added kind of stuff at some point when the landowners are interested in doing something there.
I'd like to encourage taking the ideas that Ralph's talked about and bring them around on Commerce Street as well. There are newer buildings there. I'm not anticipating that that street gets redeveloped as early as this section of one sixteen might. But I think it's, there are reasons to consider it in a similar fashion that Ralph has shown for this stretch of one sixteen. The walking distances between various red dots that we've seen would be similar. And the fact that this is not the main street would eliminate the heavy, heavy traffic of one sixteen. It would be a quieter area that could have commerce, offices, residential, all of it mixed, similar to what Ralph showed along one sixteen. So I think we should, if we're going to try to define things along one sixteen in this section, I think we should consider bringing that definition around onto Commerce Street as well.
And you, as a commissioner, have talked about that, both in the past and more recently, about what to do with a commercial district and whether to make it more explicitly mixed-use, even though you can do residential on upper stories now. Definitely worth, conversation worth having. Burlington has been having a similar conversation in the Pine Street corridor. And there was real pushback in that community about taking an area that has traditionally served as maker space and more affordable rents for light industry, art, you know, that sort of thing, and injecting a dose of residential into it that might turn into something that it can't ever come back from. I'm not saying that Commerce Park and Commerce Street is the same, but I do see some parallels. You know, that commercial district was designed to be a commercial district. It was designed to be for, not for neighborhoods, but rather for commercial uses that needed space, perhaps outside of their building. And so that would be an interesting policy discussion to talk about, you know, whether you want to see intensive multi-story buildings with more residential uses on upper floors or whether you want to continue to have that be a commercial district that...
Commercial only.
Yeah, largely, in any case, yeah.
I'm not arguing for that. I'm saying let it be more mixed. Leave the commercial in there. Let the commercial, particularly at the ground floor level, be very clear. This is a commercial area.
Or whatever, you know, if we do start, you know, as we talk about design standards, if we want to adopt, and you gave us the list of, you know, what sort of what we have now and what we're looking at, looking at changing, do we want those to apply to all areas? You know, Village Northwest, Commerce Street, one sixteen? Or are we going to continue to have, you know, discreet zoning areas?
Listening to what Ralph said when you were showing the buildings near the end that were very modern, I guess, modern-looking. Five-point-two, two-point-three, historic building removal, exterior building character. Maybe we want to look at that differently. I've heard a lot of people complain about it. That's kind of a killer of what you were showing us, saying. And I've heard, you know, I've heard people complain about that, that it's really difficult to, you know, make a building. Maybe we don't want historic-looking buildings, then, just saying. You're the devil's advocate.
I'm not, I didn't mean, I'm being a little provocative.
No, I understand totally where you're coming from, but this would limit, if you're looking at a block over there
Yeah.
and what you, you know, just your concepts, these rules here are a problem. So, just saying.
Well, only to the extent that there's a historic building that wants to be removed.
Correct, which sometimes people want to do that, and I, they, I have heard complaints that they've not done it because they feel it's so too difficult. I don't know. I don't know the process, Alex.
Yeah, well, it's a conditional use review, and we've, the board, the DRB has approved it and several, but we haven't had any since I've been here that were really principal structures that were removed. We've had accessory barns behind the principal structures on one sixteen that have gone away. And then we had the EFG building that was the old police station that didn't go away, although it was completely redone in a way that almost made it feel like it went away and came back, or, you know, with a big thing added on the back.
But perhaps prior to when, this may have been prior to when you were here, the building where the Village Car, I forgot what it's called, Village Car Center, whatever, which the Duro's own or some of the Duro families. That building was torn down.
Right.
It wasn't...
You're right. That was an approval of a principal building that was approved to be removed.
And then number two says, "All uses proposed for buildings existed before 1940 shall retain the stor..." Once again, the historical character of the said building. I just find that being, it's interesting what you propose. I don't know whether I like it or not, to be honest. I'd have to, we have, talk about it a lot more, but I just see some of these rules maybe not fitting with what you were saying.
Yeah, I probably came on a little too strong at the end.
Well, there was an example, Ralph gave, of a building that was immediately adjacent to a clearly historic building that had been renovated and modernized, but still looked very much like it was when it was first built. And buildings were built next to it that responded to the scale and the window size and window placement, even though it looked modern in other ways. So I think there's ways to define responding to a historic building without replicating it, without having to replicate exactly how it looked.
And we've got a section of our village, you know, basically from roughly the Mechanicsville Road. It kind of turns the corner, it starts to fray a little bit. But that stretch from Silver Street to the Mechanicsville Road is kind of the historic district. And I think that's a part of town that one would be pretty tender with, you know?
Right.
And yet, I don't think it should be sort of immune to some infill. And that infill could be something that doesn't necessarily mimic something that was built in eighteen hundred, you know? In fact, you know, you kind of honor what was older by not necessarily mimicking it, you know? One could say.
And there, yeah, there's a distinct difference between that stretch of one sixteen and this stretch of one sixteen, which was developed much later. And, you know, this section has just a lot more potential for redevelopment, if and when that wants to happen.
So maybe that goes to what Maggie brought up about not, of not having separate areas. Maybe we do want separate areas where you're talking from, say, as you come around the curve on one sixteen to, I don't know, along in there where we're saying it's all pretty historical. Maybe we want different rules for there and not for down.
That's reasonable. I mean, we have an area here where we're butting up against a couple's different zones.
Correct.
Right? There's no reason not to, not to create another one if you really want differentiation. I mean, what I found is interesting, Ralph, and, you know, I don't think as a board we ever thought about this before, is, yes, we've talked about, you know, pedestrian access, and we've talked about, you know, bicycle access, but we've never looked at distances. And I think what you showed us tonight and how it fits into context, you know, with other village areas... makes me wonder about some of the conversations we've had about Village Northwest and how that shapes up around 116 and what that really looks like. You know, I, I think there's, I think there's some important things that you've brought up that maybe, you know, yes. You know, they're, they're, they're very applicable to this small area, but there are probably some lessons there that we ought to think about further north as well.
The two examples you gave for developing this, I like the first one better because it, it allowed for more passageways. It seemed greener, more inviting. Maybe there's more landscaping. They had the bicycle path and the, whatever you called it, for traffic to get in there.
Little service road.
Yeah, service road.
I was actually kind of concerned about that because, you know, we, we already, we already have 116. It, it's hard to cross and, and yes, even if there's a service lane and it's supposedly slower, that's, that's just another, you know, it's another crossing point. And, you know, if, if it's really being used the way, you know, we would put it there, I mean, it's going to be busy. Right? Or I hope it is. And it's going to create, you know, some issues getting on and off 116 from there. And it's going, I think it's going to create some pedestrian issues. So I, you know, that, that part of it, that was the part I was probably least wild about.
Yeah, I think, you know, it was sort of a reaction to, you know, you, you've got, you'll end up using examples from other bigger cities that don't necessarily seem relevant to many of us, you know, but like you, you go to Commonwealth Avenue in Boston, I think, you know, that's a big, big expanse and you've got two laneways on either side. And you've got a fairly substantial sort of greenway running down the middle of it. So at least the pedestrian has the option of sort of crossing a small gap and another small gap. Of course, you might lose your concentration by you get to the third one and you get killed. You know, so, so that's kind of, the other, the other is, I remember when Kinney's was happening, you know, and at first, you, some of you probably remember some of the earlier iterations of that scheme and the discussion about two-story structures and residential neighborhoods or residential apartments, say, for example, being on the upper stories of what's now the Bagel Bakery or Parkside. And, you know, you, you got it all the time, which was, you know, people don't want to live that proximate to a sort of major traveled right of way. So how do you pull them back in a way that there's some kind of a buffer? I'm not saying what I showed you is the answer.
I'm just not sure that I, I like the, the additional, you know, motor vehicle access there, especially if we're trying to encourage pedestrian, bicycle usage.
Yeah.
I can imagine that as something similar to Church Street that is open for servicing so that res- resident, you know, restaurants, stores that need delivery have a certain time to do that and then, then it's closed.
But why wouldn't, I mean, why, why wouldn't you do, you know, street side parking, especially, I, I kind of like the idea of the reverse diagonal.
Yeah.
Right? And, and post it so that, you know,
You can't park there.
This hour to this hour, it's, you know, service vehicles and, and, and do that. And then,
You could do that.
You know, I, I think that has the benefit. I know when, when I drive into a, a village like Virgens, you know, I come across, you know, parking, it, it's on street level, especially diagonal parking. I mean, I know that the person pulling out is scared. They really can't see me, but at the same time, right, if I'm driving on the roadway, I know they can't see me when they're pulling out. So I, I would tend to slow down. It's a, it's kind of a human, you know, reaction to that situation. And, and so it, that's kind of traffic calming to, to have that sort of thing. It's the way I look at it. Yes, it's wider, but.
Same thing happens in Chris.
Yeah.
I think that configuration, there's a whole conversation, you know, in terms of just, hey, what is that street profile and how is that configured? And, you know, is it contiguous? How, you know, this is just a seven or eight hundred foot expanse. I mean, you know, we've also talked about more on-street parking, say, for example, in the more historic portion of the village. De facto, we kind of have it, you know, on the east side of the street because we're Roger Cone and a lot of the people are parking right there. It's almost like angled parking, you know, only it's a dirt strip.
But, you know, overall, I, I thought it was a, a good take. And, and one of the other, the, one of the other takeaways I, I took from it, I mean, you know, differentiated between the east side of this, of 116 and the west side. You know, with, with the business makeup on the west side, I don't think it's, it's really reasonable at this point to expect that we're going to improve, you know, pedestrian access to that side of the street. But in, you know, proposing this for the east side of the street, right, there's an alternative byway for pedestrians and bicyclists to, to basically use those, you know, number of blocks up to the intersection of Commerce Street where, you know, they can connect back west when they so choose. So I think that's, you know, that's beneficial as well. It kind of, it kind of, you know, creates that ability moving further north on 116.
You know, that, that west side of the street, you know, both the metal shop, the fire hall, even the police station, you know, I mean, there's a whole different set of requirements that are.
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, I, just the traffic ingress and egress for those types of uses is much greater and, you know, I, I don't know that there's a lot that can be changed there to really make it a, a very different experience for a pedestrian.
If there are any changes on the west side, I would want them to make it possible for those activities that are there now to continue to be there and to continue to bring vitality to the town and options in terms of employment and that, that's, that's an asset from my point of view, what's going on on the west side. If we do anything, let's improve it. Let's do anything we can to make it better.
Yeah.
That doesn't say that, for example, landscaping could be done, trees could be done in such a manner that it shaded that side, it softened that side, but it still allowed all the activities that are there now to still happen. I think we, we could think about those kinds of changes to the west.
Yeah, I, I, I think so. I just don't think that it's going to be, you know, if, if, if I'm a pedestrian and I had to choose between walking on the east side of 116 and the west side of 116.
Yeah.
Right? I think I would choose the east side of 116 if that was made available to me and especially if, you know, basically I had destinations to walk to in that area.
Yeah, yeah.
How do these ideas jive with your plans for the, for the area, guys?
I mean, all I can, can say is that, you know, any, anything that happens to the zoning of the area that restricts it from what somebody else's vision might be, restricts it. You know, so someone else may have a vision that's perfectly fine with everybody, but if it's all written into the rules that you can't do that there, there's a potential loss of, you know, somebody being able to do something with it. We end up with, like we got on Lot 15 where you got so many restrictions with, with the official map and stuff that, you know, almost makes the land unusable, unsellable unless it's exactly fitting what your plan is. So it's, it, it limits it. And if it limits it, it's going to restrict what can happen there. Whether it's us developing it or somebody else in the future.
Especially if you want like small couture places to come in, they have to be the first to be there.
They're not going to be able to afford it.
Right. They need to pay for all this parking or all this landscaping or all the road frontage and the pedestrian walks. Like, there's not, I mean, when, how many places actually come into Heinsberg and start up a business here? You know, I think that's something you need to start for a village center. Like, if there's no reason to go to downtown Heinsberg, you're not going to walk around it. You're going to drive there, go to the one place you're going to and then leave. You know, if there's a bunch of places in a certain area, then maybe you start walking around, but unless you live there already, I don't know anyone that doesn't just drive to the one place and then go to the next place. Like, you don't just walk around there.
I guess my question would be, why these two dots? Like, if you look between the dot on the right and the dot on the left, why this space where you're completely wiping it out and starting over? There's nothing else there that's, would want you to be there. There's not a historic opera house. There's not an old restaurant that's been there for 50 years in the family. There's not, there's nothing there. And if you're going to do that, why not from Commerce Street up to CBU Road where there's a blank canvas, nothing there, you're not taking out existing buildings, existing businesses and changing it all around. And you're putting it right in the middle of a highly trafficked area. Maybe a parallel street on the other side behind all of us that would connect Charlotte Road with Chauvin Falls Road and start there and build it exactly how you want it. I, I just don't see the appeal of this one spot. That's definitely a biased opinion, obviously, but there's nothing there. There's, you know, all the historic houses around here, you've got a sewer treatment plant in the middle of it. You've got us, you've got a fire station, you know, that's, they're going to roll out at two or three in the morning or just like they did while we were trying to have this meeting. You're going to, you know, have a, it's, I don't think it's a good place for a too much residential stuff, commercial stuff, yes.
I, I kind of think about like South Burlington and what they're trying to do in order to make like a downtown feel where they found an area that was green and trees and now they're trying to make it into something. Cause like South Burlington has the same problem we have where you just, it's a drive-through town.
And that's on a crosscut road that doesn't get the traffic.
Right. Instead of trying to find a spot where you can have parking and help development in that area and then start new, you know. Cause like at five o'clock, no one's going to want to go to a restaurant that's there. Cause you're like, well, I'll wait until like seven when all the traffic.
Yeah, this, this traffic backs up past Place Road, come between 3:30 and 6, 6:00 PM. You can't do anything there.
I mean, I just look at villages, you know, we've talked about the Queen Vermont villages and you figure those villages have developed over the last 250 years without you people, without planning commissions, without zoning, you know, until the last 30 or 40 years, we didn't have any of that. And it's a beautiful village. Everybody likes it. And now, you know, and everything just happened. We needed this building, we built it. Nobody's saying it has to be this picture or that picture looking. It's whatever somebody needed at the time. And to me, that's what makes a village. It's not somebody saying you have to put this in this area because this is what nine people in a room envisioned 10 years ago or whatever. And it may not be the majority of what the whole people in town want or what the real estate market requires at that time to have it happen. And you can plan all that as much as you want, but if no one's going to be able to come in with really deep pockets and want to build all that and that's all that's allowed there, you know, you're kind of, you're kind of leaving it. You know, really restricted, you know.
A big company has to come in and buy up all that land and then you have some franchise that moves in.
You know, we've already found it. Town doesn't want that because that's what Hanifert's trying to do. And everybody's, you know, everybody resisted that. So it's, the, the rest of the villages all through everywhere has, have been developed however they wanted to go over the years to whatever was needed at that time and place for the town. And it seems to work pretty good. Everything we do to restrict that is going to prevent that.
I'd rather be at home. It's true.
I'm just saying, it's, you know,
Yeah.
Everybody likes what all these villages look like all through the state, but they all happened without any interference. This is what was needed, a butcher shop or, you know, whatever, this shop or this building for, for commerce or this building for residence or whatever, stores. And before we had zoning, that, that worked pretty good for quite a few hundreds of years and everything we do to, to stick our finger in there and say, no, you can't do that. You can't do this because it's not what we planned and it's not what we envisioned and, you know, it's, it's restrictive. Is that what we want, you know? Where, you know, if, if the rules could be written so that something other than this vision could happen and it still fits within what everybody would like to see or, or what works for the town, it's too bad you restrict it by something that's too, too focused on one way when that may not be what is wanted or needed or appealing at the time. And that's just my opinion of, you know, holding things too close to what everybody thinks is correct or perfect or
Yeah.
or wanted.
You're right. There's no question that whatever was at work historically, you know, I think our communities were more self-contained to some degree 100 years ago. I think probably stepping foot outside of your village was a rare occasion. So there was a kind of common understanding about just how things got made. That just kind of stayed in a much tighter circle. Now, you know, it's not just Heinsberg anymore. It's all sorts of, people are moving through this community. They shop here, they do all sorts of things. I think some of what you say insofar as flexibility, insofar as just how a piece like this or any other piece in town gets used is a germane thing to say. I think how you can sort of write the rules lightly so that people still have the flexibility to do what they want to do, but you're still sort of helping guide shape, you know, the, the betterment and making of a, of a good town is kind of the dilemma, you know. I, I think, I mean, we look through, we, we, I think the bunch of us as an exercise over the last little while, we looked at zoning regulations in other communities, you know, just to sort of see, hey, what are other towns doing to? And, you know, there were some that were fairly spare, but most of them were, you know, pretty extensive and, you know, you really had to dig into it to try to build a building in Burlington, you know, which I do on a regular basis is like an arduous process, you know. So not unsympathetic and not even saying, hey, we, you know, we happen to pick on your piece of property here because it was so central to the village itself. And because we were sort of undertaking the exercise of, okay, how do we sort of write design standards that that work, you know, and that don't get in people's craw necessarily. So.
Well, I think there are also, there also have been two guiding reasons for doing this work on design standards. And one is community members have expressed concern about all the new development that's been proposed in the last five or so years, some of these bigger projects. And they, people, some people, not everybody, but some people seem unsure that the development review process would be able to deliver a product that Heinsburgers are proud of and will appreciate, you know, for generations. Uh, there, you know, there's frequently comments about vanilla architecture and sameness of place. You know, this, this little pod of development looks like it could have been plunked out anywhere, that sort of thing. And then there's also the concern about good development projects that come in and don't have the predictability in the review process to know that they can get through it in a reasonable timeframe and hopefully without, you know, appeals that go on for years. And so the idea, some of the ideas behind this project were come up with design standards that give the community more confidence that the product of the development will be a positive one. And so that the developer who's coming in or the landowner can say, I understand what you want and I can deliver that. And if I do, my review process should be less painful. And that's a, that's a, that's a double-edged sword, you know, trying to walk that balance between having the regulations that provide shape and also predictability, but don't create a straitjacket. That means you have no design flexibility and everything has to be just, you know, what was on that screen.
You've got to keep in mind when a permit process comes through to the DRB, and I've seen it just recently in a couple of projects we've tried to do where it never gets past mint because, well, it says right here on statute, whatever, whatever, whatever. on statute, whatever, 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 this isn't allowed in this area. And there's no, there's no, you know, they read that exactly line for line to what was written and passed and most of it was generated out of this commission. And that's it. You can't do it because this is what it says. And there's no flexibility there, there's no, there's no give and take, there's nobody saying, well, okay, let's use our common sense here and say, well, this would work. But no, we can't do that because this is what it says on that paper. And this is the way everything's written and there's no give, you know, and you think that you have a little bit of flexibility, if you could go to the right board and say, hey, this this makes sense, and everybody can sit there and agree, yeah, it does make sense, but we can't allow it because that's the way it's written. And it just restricts people wanting to do stuff that you take common sense right out of it, that we just follow what was written and, you know, you guys, I guess, you know, nobody can write anything with all the right you know, foresight to say that, well, yeah, what about this, what about that? And it it's written in there and that's what people have to follow and it's, you know, it's D R B's job to follow what was written to, you know, right to the letter and
Yeah, it's a tough.
And the more restrictions you put on there to and and wording it specifics to this or that, oh, no, I think this falls in this category, and that all ends up being a matter of opinion, whether it's an individual zoning administrator or a whole board, well, that's what it says, so I guess our hands are tied, we can't do anything. It's just, it's just too bad that you take out the whole common sense, you know, point of it that, you know, hey, this makes sense, let's, let's ignore the rules and do what we know all makes sense and would work for everybody, but we can't because this is the way it's written.
Yeah, our our plan unit development regulations try to get at that by saying there's an, there's an avenue by which you can get a project reviewed where you do get to bend and break the rules as long as you meet certain criteria. But it's, it's been difficult, the history of of um litigation in Vermont uh with development review is that the courts uh strike down regulations that aren't clear, that aren't black and white because they say that it gives the development review boards unbridled discretion to interpret them however they want and that a landowner or developer doesn't have the ability to just read the language and know what was expected. So it's a, again, it's a, it's a fine line to walk between preserving that common sense flexibility in a review process and also providing the predictability that, you know, you come in and you kinda know, you should be able to predict what you're gonna get out of the other end.
Times change, businesses change, what people want change, you know, it used to be strip malls, now maybe something else, you know, I don't keep up with it enough to know, but unless you go through and and change everything all the time and, you know, and then there still might be one person that wants to build something and say, oh, we never thought of that, you know, we never left provisions for that, we never left a place to even put such a thing as that because we didn't think about it.
Yeah.
If things are too strict and too tight, you kinda cut yourself out of that.
Well, Kyle Bostwick was a former member of this commission who would often make the same case at the table, like, I I like this idea about this regulation, but can't we include a proviso that says if we come up with a different, you know, a different way of doing it that will at least look at that? And uh it's, it's, it's valid point, it's hard, it's hard to do in a regulatory context wi- without just tossing the regs. And I know you're not suggesting that, Steve, but I also hear the the thread that you are kinda saying, maybe, maybe it'd be nice if we didn't have all these regs and things can just happen the way the market wants them to.
Sometimes you still gotta use common sense.
Yeah.
To say, this, this is good, this is what we all could use, we all, everybody agreed we want it. But if the regs say we can't have it, well, we have to throw it out.
I I mean, I I agree with everything you're saying, I I I think there are some cases here where you know, um townspeople have come to us with common sense things and said, hey, I would like to do X, but e- exactly what you're saying, but the regulations don't, you know, don't allow me to do this, right? What do you think as a board, can I convince you as a board that this is a good thing, can you change the regulations for me? I mean, I I think it's important to hear those things and the board won't always answer you affirmatively, right? We're, you know, nine individuals, but if y- if nothing is ever said, right? The only way it's ever gonna come up is if, you know, someone from the zoning department writes it down and brings it to us for a you know, a housekeeping change, you know, years later. So um, you know, if 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 you really believe in something, say something.
Yeah, but you know, the process, the wheels move slow here, you know, you can be talking about this and
Yeah.
these don't come in for two years, so if someone comes in and wants to do something, you can't say, oh, you gotta wait two years while we change our zoning and our planning. I'm just saying if it's, if it's in there where things are flexible enough that it can be allowed and don't write it all so restrictive that you you don't, you you're not, you're never gonna be able to allow it, you know, real estate market wouldn't work that way.
The the example I will give is, is when I first joined the planning commission, I don't know how many years ago, right? We had what is now Village Northeast, right, zone is like agricultural, I think, right? And energy came in and, you know, they made a good case why we needed an industrial area um that was closer to town and on good soils, et cetera, et cetera. And yes, I mean, if you looked at the regulations that day when when it was talked about, they couldn't do what they wanted to do. But um the common sense argument won the day, right? And we have a building that is now N R G and we have, you know, other uses that hopefully will grow up around that. So I, was it, was it super fast, was it days? No. But it was probably months, it wasn't a long time, right? And that was probably a a more special situation, but it is an example that you know, boards do listen.
Yeah, the other one that most people don't know about is Ericor Manufacturing, they uh when they expanded on the north side of Richmond Road, they they wanted a zoning change to Monkeywood, the industrial district there. Um and in that case, it happened really quickly, in part just because of serendipity, the the planning commission was reviewing some other zoning changes. This suggestion came in and it was able to get tacked on to that other batch and because it was, it made sense from the everyone's viewpoint and so was able to move quickly. Um but but that's not generally the rule, you know, generally it does take several years to get a significant zoning change through.
But Alex, I think part of that is this town because I think other towns do do housekeeping changes way more frequently and faster than we do in Heinsberg.
Well, Shelburne does, that's for sure.
Absolutely, so, I mean, that's not to say it can't be done, I mean, Alex, I agree with what he said, but we're slow to do that in this town. I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, but that's the reality of it.
Well, maybe uh the points that Steve's trying to make about flexibility can inform you know, your point, Ralph, about the form-based code options where the 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 beauty of that, even if it, even if consultants tell us it's a lot of money to figure that out and we don't have the chops to do it, is that we don't, we don't uh restrict as much in terms of the types of uses that can be in those places, we just define what the shell of the building, you know, where it should be approximately in relation to streets and pedestrian ways and allow the market to figure out what, in any given decade, what use wants to be in that particular building. Whether they're the buildings you showed, um or a side or a different configuration. From what I understand, frequently, it it's never a complete disconnect. The traditional zoning where you say, these are the allowed uses and these are the conditional uses and these are prohibited still hangs around and the form-based code sort of informs how it gets built. But in the ideal world, yeah, you can sort of get rid of some of that uh use restriction and and focus more on building form.
The other thing I would say, you, Steve, and and people in similar situations, there's, I don't think there's anything about what Ralph's ideas were showing that that needs to happen all at one time. There's no reason why a developer couldn't come in and work with a landowner and do part of that. And in fact, I think the the rules should allow for incremental growth, not require that this whole block be developed, and I don't think there was any implication in what Ralph was showing us uh that it, this all has to happen at one time. This should happen at one time, I I don't, I mean, you say, I I don't, I don't think you were thinking of that at all, you know, this is how a final form might look, a final development. But the market and the landowners will make the decision as to when things move, when things happen. In fact, the the example that that you gave about N R G, that happened because N R G wanted to do something there and came in with ideas about it, which I could imagine you and your group say, we'd like to do something over here, we 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 wanna change this use over here and can we talk about it? I I think that's like step number one is to talk between landowners, developers and the folks who write the rules.
Problem is just being very targeted with the exact location, you know? It seems like that's really specific to like Jero's in general, and I guess I don't see the advantage as a downtown area, if that's really what like the town would do well with, is a spot where people will actually go to shop, to eat, all that good stuff that the town needs. It's like, is this the best location? And I don't see that based on the traffic flow and what's there currently, I mean, Jero Body Shops has been there for hundred years, ninety?
Since twenty-two.
So almost a hundred years, like not much has changed there if you had an aerial view from a hundred years ago to now.
It's the proximity, I mean, I think that's what you were trying to make the case for, Ralph, initially with the maps, is that this particular thousand-foot section
Right.
is immediately adjacent to the sort of historic Main Street section. And and when you look at the larger village growth area that's been zoned with, you know, stuff happening up near Ballards and N R G, this is the center, this will be the center of the village as it builds out.
Crossed on the septic plant, it's like, is that what we want as a town?
Well, no, proximity-wise, ge- you you can't change the geography based on the uses.
To one of the ends. Is that a problem? If our housing is now going that direction, we're adding two hundred, four hundred new houses going that way.
Sure.
But and then keeping everything on that side of the road, that limits crossing one sixteen, it's pedestrian.
Well, all I'm saying is I think part of the reason for uh the emphasis on this particular section of the village is the central location that it is. You're absolutely right, it's adjacent to some uses that uh might constrain what you wanna do there. Um and the other is that it it uh it's it's primed for redevelopment and you guys know that, it's just it's got buildings that aren't being used, it's um it's got lots, the auto-motion lot in particular that has lots of space out front that can do other things, additional things. Now, in the greenfield areas, you can do whatever you want, you're right, it's a, it's a blank canvas.
Would it be put pro development zoning, I don't even know what that would look like, but things over there that would make people wanna build over there.
Over
Like
In that same area.
Same area we're just talking about.
Like if we wanted to build a Ericor-sized building on that side of the road and then someone else wanted to Ericor wanted to build another building there and you end up with just two giant beige boxes, like it doesn't fit the nice pictures, but it is a, you know, it would fit our business.
Okay.
Where I see you guys coming from is you don't like when you drive through Heinsberg right now, what we have there. Because buildings don't look the best, there's some open space, there's an old Quonset hut, there's a couple houses sitting empty. And this is like the first step of pushing to to correct that. Whereas there's this entire Charlotte Road, which is right across from Lantman, is a perfect center to put everything you're asking for, it's a side street that doesn't get the heavy one sixteen traffic. It's open land, you don't have to mess with anybody else's uh structures that are sitting there. And that seems like it's a lot closer to this part of town and it could loop around behind uh Creekside and all the other ones and keep the dense, heavy traffic and the fire department and us and the sewer plant and the old Bishons there and have a side street to get out of this industrial area.
Yeah, I I don't think that we'll ever get around the fact that this stretch of road is Main Street. Um and and will always be part of the front and center part of Heinsberg as you, as you, as you come into town. Nor will you um nor will you get rid of the fact that one sixteen is the golden ribbon that runs through town when it comes to business, businesses, that's where eyeball, they want eyeballs cause that's where dollar signs happen, when it comes to anybody that wants pass-through traffic, customers, all the rest of that. So as much as, as much as we are planning to, you, so John, you talked about like, let's do it in the greenfield area. W- we are actually planning to do that in the Village Northwest District to try to replicate some of what we have here. Uh but, you know, with more modern construction and and mix of uses. Uh but some of the commissioners recently, and Ralph, you're one of them, uh have been saying you know, the viability of replicating all of that when it's a little more distant from the existing center may not be as good as as what it would be if it could happen closer to the center of things. And on the one sixteen corridor where, again, all the cash registers ring. So it's, it's a combination of, in my mind, it's a combination of proximity, uh potential and and um, you know, that that one sixteen draw for variety of uses. But that's not to say that what you're saying about that area having other types of potential uses isn't possible, so it's worth having that conversation about what what that side of one sixteen wants to be. I'll be very honest with you, I really hope that that east side of one sixteen turns into something else someday. Cause right now with the abandoned building and and the like, it's not, it's, it doesn't, it seems like you guys could extract a lot more value out of that and the community could benefit from that at the same time.
We've actually tried to do something with those two abandoned buildings and have gotten nowhere with Mitch on them.
Yeah, I know, you had conversations about possibly
It wasn't a permanent use maybe, but it's something they get by so we can afford to keep the place until something great can happen.
Right, there's no, it's
And and that was the idea of having like a um a place where folks could could uh store material or equipment or vehicles, right? Sort of like a mini contractor's yard.
Contractor's yard.
Right.
Which is not allowed in the code, so that was the end of the discussion.
That's where the discussion ended, so it's, that's why we're saying a little bit more flexibility.
I guess this just scares us even more, cause it's like, are we just gonna zero down on this one area of the road and say, this is now new zoning and regulations you have to follow for just this one spot that only the Jero's actually applies to? Like that seems like why doesn't the whole town, you know, or the whole zoning districts? It should be whole zoning districts applied, not
Well, and that was, that's the conversation that I think Maggie was was mentioning, that right now we have largely uh village growth area-wide design standards. We have a little bit of special stuff for the northern gateway that goes from Patrick Brook North up to Ballards where N R G is and that, but mostly it's all the same design standard, and so that's an open question about whether those standards should continue to be for the whole growth area, whatever new ones that uh come up with. Or or should they be district-specific or area-specific? So and I hear what you're saying, you'd think it'd be more fair if they were spread across the larger growth area, not just singling out one area.
Yeah, I just wanna make a comment about um you mentioned that some people don't like the way it looks and I I agree, the east side, I think it's way underutilized, but there are a lot of us who um who uh know about the origins of the town and and uh and Jero's symbolizes the, you know, that's where Heinsberg got its start as a, as a mechanic, you know, a um manufacturing center. And uh and I personally really like the fact that that the shop is right there, um you know, coming into the town, so.
Some of us like Quonset hat.
Some of us don't know why you like Quonset hats, but that's okay.
Some of us don't know why you like that, so. It's each personal opinion.
Yeah.
Yes, well, we do have a community of forty-five hundred or so folks that all have different opinions, that's part of why things take a while in Heinsberg cause everybody has one and about twenty-five percent of them want, wanna make sure you know about what they think, the others probably don't care if you know.
You all saw it for the first time tonight. Most of us saw it for the first time tonight, these these ideas. Alex and and Maggie got a little preview, but we haven't Alex and Maggie got a little preview, but we haven't had a chance to really absorb and talk about these things. So having your perspective added to that is a great improvement in terms of how things have developed in the past. How we've developed the rules and regulations in the past. I think it's much better to have you here too.
I think the location aside, whether it's our property or not, if any of you have driven through Heinsberg from 3:00 to 6:00, you can't do anything in this town on that stretch of road. It's a standstill and it's miles of backed-up traffic. So as a perspective of trying to put a center there where you might stop to just pull in here and get something at this, you know, angular parking at some store, you're not going to do it. Because you'll never get a parking spot or you'll never get out. So I think putting our land and our, you know, biased opinion aside, it might not be the best spot to try to put that kind of commerce.
I understand your argument, but at the same time, I don't think Hanafords would want to be in Heinsberg if they didn't think they were going to benefit from that same traffic that's rolling through town. But they have to get in and out of there.
Yep.
Right? And that's even...
Wasn't there some proposed traffic lights to help them get in and out?
Well, I think you got what you got. You got Commerce Street and the state said, hey, you just slowed down your traffic. You repost it so you don't even need an extended, you know, turning lane there. So, I mean, frankly, I think that's going to be a huge issue. I think traffic coming into Commerce Street, not a Commerce Street for that project is going to be a huge issue, right? And we'll find that out if it ever happens. But my point is simply, right, a business like Hanaford would not want to locate in Heinsberg if they didn't think they would benefit from the traffic going through Heinsberg.
It's just hard, like if you were on 116 to pull on and off. Like which way you're going, you might be there. You know, you might as well have a car parked on the other side and walk across and take back car.
Yeah. Hanaford and Commerce Street will have traffic lights helping them, whereas the straight shot through won't. Like I park across the street from our shop and I go to lunch at 12:30. It takes five minutes to go from across the street on the east side back on to our side at 115. I had to wait constant, constant traffic. I buffer five minutes into my lunchtime to make sure I can cross the street there because it's that hard to do. And I think it'd be even harder if I was trying to back a vehicle out of a spot or pull out of a spot in that traffic. Because we're all friendly, but no one lets anybody out in traffic. I think it would just cause a lot more congestion through a part of town that's already really heavy. And I'm not saying Hanaford wouldn't either. Hopefully they would help pay to change some stuff so we could move traffic a little easier.
It's definitely a big concern. We've heard from plenty of people in the community that feel like the parking lot that develops on 116 during that, you know, four to six timeframe is, something needs to be done about it. And I don't, and I think there are people, I know George Dameron, just to throw him under the bus since he's not here, has raised similar concerns about...
Yeah, he lives right there.
Right. Like his concern is how are we going to absorb all this new development that this, that the town has zoned for, given that we have the traffic congestion that we have today? And so we're working on that on a number of fronts, but I don't think we want to fool anybody. We're always going to have backups during the peak hour in the evening. We just always will. And it's a good question about what kinds of uses are most appropriate in that golden ribbon. But I do agree, I'm sorry agreeing with both of you, but I do agree with Joe in the sense that Kenny Drugs came and wanted to be in that mass of congestion because they knew the value to, you know, to make money. Hanaford, you're right, it's on a side road, but still it's got to get in and out of that place. Lampman's, I know I've heard from Brian in the past that he needs, he wants to see fixes so that his customers feel more comfortable coming in during the peak hour. But they still do. You know, people shop there.
You can make it part of your routine. You need to work.
Yeah. So it's a, like everything in planning, it's a double-edged sword. You know, you want to encourage businesses in your core where you have infrastructure, where they have good visibility. And yet you got to deal with the impacts of traffic and it's not easy.
Any other comments?
So procedurally, since you guys are here, I think the commissioner's been talking about these architectural and streetscape design standards for maybe since June. It's been several, it's been a few months. And it's all still been sort of brainstorming and looking at other regs and trying to learn from other communities. So nothing has been put, no pens have been put to paper yet. But I think over the next month or two, we will draft something. So I'll try to keep you in the loop since you showed up and let you see a draft so that you can maybe come back another time. And you're welcome to come back every time, but if you want to come back at a particular meeting when there's actual, you know, something to critique, we could do that.
Thanks for coming.
All right, thank you.
You're also welcome to stay for the rest of the conversation. What time do you have, Maggie?
So 8:36.
All right. So you're about 20 minutes behind schedule.
Yeah. So I'm wondering if Dan's up for doing a scoop through the Winuski standards? Alex, would you be able to pull those up?
Yep.
And, Dan, when the rest of us did this a couple of weeks ago, we were just, yeah, pulling out, you know, whatever is of particular interest. Anything that jumped out at you, anything that you liked or really disliked or think might work in Heinsberg?
Yeah.
I noticed a lot of pictures on yours, so...
Yeah. There were definitely a lot of pictures. And I would say my first overall reaction to this was it was very detailed and a lot of information. And, you know, I had to look through the packet a few times to wrap my head around it a little bit. To me, anyway, it seemed a little confusing. You know, I didn't quite grasp, you know, what all the language was and really like, you know, the differences between all the different codes and how it all worked. But, you know, after looking at it for a while, what I gathered was, you know, on this first page, they have different zones or areas. And based on the little map, the guide that they have, there's different codes, you know, based on the zones. And so I thought that was interesting. And it seemed like based on some of the conversations we've had tonight, could be something that, you know, would be interesting to look at for Heinsberg.
It's really interesting that Winuski, unlike a lot of the other communities you looked, other commissioners looked at, has these codes by street. They're not districts. They are literally, I mean, just as this map shows, three approach, you know, main streets. And we just got through tonight talking about a particular section of the street.
Yeah, exactly. And it seemed like there are some codes or regulations, whatever you want to call them, that apply to multiple areas or multiple streets that, you know, apply for a lot of them. But then there are codes that are specific to certain areas. So when you look through this whole packet, you know, they've got building form standards, which I think is somewhat general to specific areas and buildings. But then it's also broken out into urban general frontage. And then there's urban storefront frontage, townhouse slash small house apartment. So, you know, each section here has some different information and different standards based on, you know, what they have, how they have it broken out. The one that I found somewhat most relevant, I feel like to Heinsberg, was the detached frontage, which...
Could you give Alex a page number? Maybe he could...
Yeah, sure. So 29, I think. It says down here at the bottom.
Can you tell us what detached frontage means? Do you know?
Yeah. So it says the detached frontage is represented by the traditional single-family house with small front, side, and rear yards along the street lined, the tree-lined street. Structures are one to two stories in height with pitched roofs, front porches. Its purpose is to reinforce the character of its single-family neighborhoods. So, you know, maybe this is more towards like some of, I guess, those neighborhoods that you see in Winuski, some of those side streets. But at the same time, you know, even with some of the pictures that you were showing tonight, you know, it's still those, you know, those homes, those historical homes that we have in Heinsberg. And so just based on looking at this section a little bit more, you know, it talks about all those different points that we were looking at in that list. So it's got, you know, it talks about, you know, building height, lot size and setbacks, front yard. And this one here, after reading through it, you know, this one, this area seemed a little more simple and easy to understand for me. And it's, you know, just a couple pages. It's got, you know, one, two, three pages.
And it is, they say it's specifically designed to reinforce the character of a single-family home neighborhoods.
Yeah.
So it might be an interesting section to look at with regard to Village Northwest, where we're going to see more single-family home development.
Are the porches mandatory?
Um, I don't know if they're mandatory or not. I didn't read all the details that closely, but...
They sure have them in every picture.
Yeah.
Yeah, they seem to.
Uh, you know, it...
Hopefully not. That would be too much. Oh, why? Don't you think? I like porches.
I like porches.
Yeah, but to be forced, then you couldn't have a building like some of the ones that Rolf showed us, which I thought were interesting.
I mean, I don't see anything in here specifically about porches. It might just be kind of the character of the neighborhood as it's developed.
Right, yeah. What?
They only put pictures of all porches in there. Psychological biasing.
Yeah, right.
They don't want to write the rec, but they put pictures in there.
Brain wants to.
Were there other particular provisions or sections that spoke to you or was it principally this one?
And then in the first couple pages, it does talk about, you know, you know, they talk about building form standards. And the goal of the building form standards, you know, is create a vial in public realm through the street space. And it has some standards that I think through reading it are more general. But then it also has, like in parentheses, unless other, you know, otherwise specified in this section here. So maybe a little bit of what we were talking about tonight of, these are some more general regulations, but also giving a little bit of flexibility into some areas as well.
Found it.
What? We just see...
I'll zoom in so you can actually read what I'm reading. But here's the second page of that detached frontage piece. And see what it says under building projections? Each building facade shall include a front porch at the RBL, whatever that is, between eight and 12 feet deep with a width not less than half.
Sure. Zoe is shaking her head. No porches for us.
This is an enacted regulation. It's not a draft.
Correct. Yep. This is Winuski's form-based code.
No, just not on every house.
Do you know what process? How did they come to this? Did they hire outside consultants? Did they do this in their planning office?
So they don't have much of a planning office. So I'm pretty sure that this was done, yeah, by consultants. But I couldn't tell you which one or how much they spent.
Yeah, because I was looking on their website to try and find this online. I had a hard time finding it. I couldn't find it on their website, but it seemed like their planning commission was just three people.
Yeah, for quite a while. In fact, Winuski's planner, Jim, I always get his last name wrong, Tripez. He lives in Heinsberg and he was their planner for a long, long time. But they had a different sort of model than a lot of communities. And when he left, they didn't replace him for, I want to say like six or seven years and just got a planner again like a year or two ago. And so the regional planning commission was doing some work for Winuski and they had a lot of consultant horsepower and the like.
When was this enacted?
Yeah, good question, John. Let me look. To me, it feels older than all the rest, but let me look.
And I wonder what projects have happened since this was the regulation?
So these are form-based code regulations for their gateway districts. And do they give me an adoption date? It doesn't look like they do.
They're building a huge new apartment building that she found from the...
From the interstate.
Yeah, that's one of their...
CCV and...
That's one of their gateways. That's one of their gateways.
I know a bunch of projects that have been built there in the last five years.
The date that I have on this is April of 2018, but I don't know that that's when it was adopted. Because I don't see a date on the document itself.
Yeah, and this is only for that one specific street or zone. I mean, where they're doing all that newer development, it's, you know, I'm sure it's completely different. Like they have the...
Well, if you look at the map from the beginning of this, the excerpts that I gave, that I handed out, that you were looking at, Dan, not the whole code, here's the map and...
It's hard to read the guide. I couldn't tell like which area was which.
Yeah, the document unfortunately is terrible. It's not a, it's a scanned document, so it's hard to read.
That's why I was trying to find it on the website.
And you couldn't, right? Because I couldn't either. So here's the interstate and so here's Route 2 coming in. And there's the circulator.
The roundabout.
And roundabout, yeah. And this is sort of the main street that goes up to the interstate. So these codes are in, you know, this area, which is exactly where that, those, that big apartment building is going in with another one right across the street from it actually, if you drive by. So, yeah, it's interesting.
None of the code is down around the old mills or where the building that...
Yeah, I think there's, I think there's a different kind of master plan that happened here. And so they were focused mostly on these gateway areas and not so much the core. But I have to echo what Dan said. I felt when I read the whole code, not just the excerpts, that Winuski's was just really hard to parse and difficult to understand and just dense, really, really dense.
It'd be interesting to talk to the people who are developing those apartments.
It would be actually, yeah. How that process went for them.
About going into this.
That's interesting.
That's who, you know, Steve and his partners there in Jero, that's those guys.
Maybe I'll do that, John. I'll talk to my counterpart in Winuski and see if I can get a phone number for the developer there to see and see if they went through this process or if it was prior to this being adopted.
Is there a date down in this corner of the map that we can see?
I can't see, you know.
Not one that I think would enlarge.
It would just turn into fuzz.
But my point was only that I didn't find a lot of useful examples in the Winuski code. I think, Dan, you highlighted some that might be interesting for more of the single-family home neighborhood. But I didn't find anything that I was like, that's going to work in Heinsberg.
We could use the pictures of all those single-family homes that they've collected.
I assume those pictures are all from Winuski, so it'd be interesting to get some pictures if we're going to use pictures of our own community, if we have any that work.
Well, Dan, thank you. And if, as we're talking about stuff, if anything, you know, seems relevant, especially when it comes to porches, Marie.
Back to what Ross' presentation, it just kind of opened my brain in ways that I'm not sure that he approves of. It's okay. I just think that, yeah, maybe things don't all have to look alike and have more room for creativity.
Well, let's think about that and how we can put that in. I mean, are there areas where we're, you know, obstructing creativity? And if there are, because I, you know, I'm a... for there are, it's, um, because I, you know, I'm a fan of variety myself and, I mean, I, yeah.
That is one thing I've heard in the, in the planning world is that the, the PUD, the Plan Unit Development Option, which is that one I was mentioning to, um, Steve and Matt and those guys, that that's a way that you can move a development through the review process, but sort of rewrite the rules as you go. Um, there are plenty of planners who say, uh, we don't get a lot of projects that pr- get proposed in that process because it seems a little too, um, too much of a, of a debate between the developer and the board about what's the right way to go forward. Um, and also because sometimes the PUD, uh, uh, allowances were, include these extra requirements and extra standards that might be scary or difficult to meet or whatever. And so the, some of the feedback has been if you, if you have zoning that doesn't work very well, 'cause it's based on New Jersey from 1960, um, and you have a PUD option that's meant to allow for creative innovative development, um, and that's what you really wanna see, just change your base zoning to be more like your, your creative PUD option, you know, in- include more flexibility and, and get rid of those, uh, uh, sort of overly restrictive provisions in your base zoning instead of having these two models, one where you have to have an argument to, you know, debate to be able to write new rules and one that's based on a zoning that's outdated.
So, um, I feel like, uh, we need to push this off for the next, next meeting to talk about, um, uh, which is kind of a shame that we don't have more time to, to talk about the, um, about this, but I'm hoping we can come back in the next, the next meeting and be prepared to, you know, segue from this proposal and, and looking at what, you know, is this something that, that we wanna see, this type of, um, of development? And if so, how do we get there? And looking specifically at our, um, you know, at the, at the, uh, the list that Alex made of, of, um, potential standards and really seeing where we could make some improvements, um, and do some tweaking to, to get what we'd really like to see, um, and taking into consideration all the, you know, what we've been looking at from other towns. Um, was there, in, in the, in that list of standards, was there anything that anyone didn't see? Um, anything that, uh?
Is it missing?
Yeah, um, I mean, I, I, I appreciate Alex, you're putting all that together. Um, I think that was really helpful to see.
I kinda followed that list when I did Colchester, but after we, I did my little presentation and we talked and, and you showed the picture, it looks like, sure, they had a lot of this stuff there, but we didn't like what they had. I think I could say that we had a total consensus of we didn't like it. So that's another scary thought to me.
Yeah, is, is identifying what don't we want and, you know, uh.
Well, I think that's part of the value of what you did by, um, diving into the weeds of some of these other municipal codes so that when I give you a draft, 'cause I think we're gonna get there at some point, the, uh, you can say, hey, wait a minute, I saw that in Colchester and that, and I, and that stinks, or I, or I'm already familiar with that one, 'cause I read it in Winuski and I don't think it's clear enough or, or what have you.
But it seemed like it was everything, which is like, huh.
Yeah.
We need a, we need a Heinsburg-specific, uh, code. Uh, every, every person from the high-powered Form Based Code people to, you know, the planner down the street will tell you, don't just copy and paste.
No, and, and in fact, one of the towns that you, uh, when you weren't here, but before that, the meeting before that you kind of liked, was it Jericho that we liked so much or one of those towns, but didn't someone say that they copied this from somewhere else?
Well, they, they copied some of the, uh.
Which is a little disappointing.
Well, they, they, uh, yeah, I, I was the one, I think, who said that.
Yeah.
I think it was more having to do with, um, some of the specific small language that I think they just cribbed from other places.
Like from the.
The bigger scale, larger picture, I think, was, was okay. I, I thought Jericho and, uh, Westford, that one table, I mean, you know, for me, a lot of it is just concise.
And clarity.
Easy to use information. 'Cause that is what frustrates the public, not just the public.
Yeah.
I look at, I go into a community and try to design a building in some of these places and, uh, it's like they've got tripwires out for you, you know?
Well, and I, I think Heinsburg's regulations are like that. I think they're really hard to define stuff.
I haven't done much in this town.
Sorry, sorry. Do an amazing job.
No, 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 no.
But I find, I find it incredibly confusing when I try to find stuff.
I am the first to admit and, and advocate that we, we need a soup-to-nuts revision of the zoning regs, sort of throw them out and start over and get what we really want, but, but we haven't, we haven't been able to budget for that, so we continue to cob on and try to tweak as we go.
So I'm, I'm gonna suggest, it, um, if, if folks can take a look at, you know, a second look at, at, um, Alex's list, if there's anything you think is missing, uh, you can shoot them an email and maybe you can throw it on and, uh, and.
Are you referring to this document?
Uh, no, the.
Village Design Standards.
Is it here?
This one?
It's a two-page document.
Yep.
It's tied in.
Right here.
Front and back.
Village Area Design Standards that.
So, so let's, so let's come back in two weeks and, and really be prepared to, to, um, dive in, um, dive into those. Um, so, uh, what I'd like to do now is just whip through the meeting, the minutes and then, um, give Kate some time to talk about the letter, um, uh, the stormwater, stormwater letter, um, that we took a look at. So, minutes, um, for the August fourteenth meeting. Does anyone have any changes?
I've got something, uh, for my section on page two, the, next to the last paragraph. Uh, you've got a sentence in there, Kate. John Kay mentioned that North Hero has a nice downtown area. I would suggest that that get moved to the end because when you then say they don't address things like parking, what happened, all of that applies to South Hero. So move that to the end and don't call it a nice downtown area. Call it a small core, for ends, an inn, a restaurant, a beach on the lake. That's the little jewel of, uh, of North Hero. It's definitely not downtown.
Any, any other comments or changes?
What about it?
Motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, all right, so, uh... So we had that letter in our packet from, um, three members of the Council of Protection Commission. Do you, would you wanna say something about that, Kate?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think our letter essentially speaks for itself, but, um, just to sort of review briefly, um, really our concerns are that with the number of developments going in that all essentially drain to Patrick Brook and from there into the La Platte River, um, in Heinsburg, we have sort of the difficult situation of a lot of our waterways have already been altered in some way, so they've been straightened, they've been channelized, they've been altered for agriculture, um, and this has led to marginal water quality. So we're sort of teetering on this edge of like, are we gonna maintain our water quality or is it gonna go downhill? And if it goes downhill, our town or taxpayers are gonna be on the hook for, um, very expensive mitigation efforts to try to clean up the waterway. So, um, essentially with these five large developments, um, potentially planned and could potentially go in all about the same time, we have concerns about, um, stormwater runoff, erosion, that type of thing, that, um, may not be well addressed by our town and state regulations. Um, our town does have better regulations than what the state requires, which is great. Um, but when you look at putting in a whole bunch of things all at once, there's potential for, you know, an upstream development to affect something that's going on downstream that we're not, we're not calculating, we're not preparing for, that then causes water quality problems that can affect our town in the future. So really, we're just bringing it up, um, as a concern that we'd love to see addressed in some fashion. Um, we don't have the answer as to how to address it, but, uh, I feel like it's important that our town look at in the very near future before these things, um, get, you know, get pushed through and start getting built.
Will you advocate though? I mean, you advocated in that letter pretty, uh, strongly that the town should hire an independent consultant to really sort of review these applications. How, um, how feasible, how likely, how, uh, what kind of precedent, you know, do we have for doing that in the past? Is that a simple procedure? Are there some people who function in that capacity in definitely sort of an independent fashion? Do we have a relationship?
Yeah.
With consultants that have done some of this kind of work in our community before?
Alex can speak to some of that a little bit, but, um, our, our area has been studied in several past studies, um, through Malone and McBroom primarily, uh, that's really gone into the hydrology and effects of like development and road infrastructure and whatnot on, on our water here in Heinsburg. Um, I think you should have in your packet one of the studies, but there are several others that have looked at, at all these impacts. Um, they are a little bit large and in-depth, but, um, the, the advantage that we have is that a lot of that, those studies have been done already and so I would hope anyways that the future study would not be quite as expensive or.
Yeah.
As, you know, would require as many resources maybe as if we were just starting from like, hey, we don't know anything about our town.
Yeah.
But, 'cause I don't have experience with like the, the history of that.
So the context for the letter was, was, it was actually a letter to the Development Review Board in regards to a particular application, the Donovan-O'Donnell subdivision proposal on Mechanicsville Road. Um, and the suggestion was utilize what the regulations allow the DRB to do, which is hire an independent consultant at the applicant's expense to take a look at this and make sure that, uh, the cumulative effects of multiple developments, you know, are being considered. So there's plenty of precedent for us to, to, to hire an independent consultant. We've done that before, so that's not a reach and the regulations specifically authorize it, so that's not an issue. Um, we have done it before with stormwater, um, and we don't have a particular consultant that we work with, so it could be any consultant. I think the only requirement in the regs is that we, uh, advise the applicant who we've selected and, you know, try to, uh, be cognizant of cost since they would be covering that cost, uh, presumably. Um, Mylan and McBroom would be the logical choice because of their, the, the relationship we've had with them over the years on several other studies like Kate mentioned, um, but it wouldn't have to be them. The, I think what Kate's saying is accurate, that the data and the modeling that, um, Mylan and McBroom have done in the past could be leveraged by another consultant firm, uh, to help with that. Procedurally though, for that to happen, has to happen as a part of the DRB review. So, um, typically the point at which the DRB hires an, uh, an independent consultant is when the applicant has, is presenting data specific to that topic by their own consultant and we either have questions about it or we'd like it fact-checked or whatever. Um, and for stormwater, that, the planning for stormwater happens in a larger subdivision at the preliminary plat stage. So major subdivisions go through a sketch plan review, which is conceptual. You don't have stormwater planning at that phase. Uh, they then move to this preliminary plat review, which is where you get all the engineering and all the details. And then there's a final review, which is, uh, sort of cleaning up the loose ends. So it's at that middle preliminary plat stage where the DRB could, uh, would have a stormwater plan, you know, in there as part of the submission and then could say, we're gonna continue to review this for six weeks or eight weeks till, uh, go out and find an independent consultant to, uh, provide some feedback. So procedurally, at least in my mind, that's, that's when that would happen if it were done through the Development Review Board's process. Now, wh- which project would be the one to trigger that? I don't know. Is it Donovan-O'Donnell? Is it Blackrock? Is it, uh, Heinsburg Center?
Who's, who's front and center at the moment?
Uh, yeah, I think that, um, I think that Blackrock will probably be the, the next project that, that comes in with that preliminary plat review. Um, so it might be worth having the conversation at the DRB level as a function of that project. It's also a very large project.
Yeah.
Um, so they have more in the way of resources, um.
Would it affect their project isn't in the area where the O'Donnell project is at all?
It's not, but it's downstream, it's downstream of it. It discharges to Patrick Brook and it's in the same watershed.
So are we, with the DRB, you expect, ask for, uh, the study to include the upstream projects?
So that, we have precedent for having the DRB with traffic studies, um, ask the applicant's consultant to factor in other approved projects, you know, to say, so for example, um, Blackrock has done a traffic study that they will present at their preliminary plat. They know that Hannaford was approved, it's under appeal, but they're gonna include Hannaford's traffic in their traffic assessment. And similarly, uh, the project that NRG, that's proposed near NRG is trying to assume traffic from other projects. We haven't done that before with stormwater planning, especially, we haven't done it where a, an applicant is asked to model, um, s- potential additional stormwater impacts from, from other projects that have not yet been approved but are still in the review process and don't necessarily have all the details of their own stormwater planning yet. So that could be difficult, um, but if we were to hire our own independent consultant, you know, we just tell them to make it, make it happen and they're gonna make a lot of assumptions, you know, based on whatever best data they can get out of those other projects.
I would think we want it to be as inclusive as we could possibly be if we can get a developer to include that in part of, or part of that cost in their process.
The difficulty is that, um, stormwater is a, is a, you know, is done by engineers and engineers want real data. And if a project like Donovan-O'Donnell hasn't fleshed out their actual impervious surface coverage yet, then if we ask the Blackrock consultant or if we ask an independent consultant to factor in Donovan-O'Donnell, they're gonna say, how do I do that? I don't, they don't even know what their, what their road network looks like, how much impervious surface, so they're gonna have to make some assumptions.
If, if, if a project hasn't been through preliminary plat yet, they don't have the, the plans out there, it's very difficult to include that in analysis. It almost sounds to me like, once you, once you pull the trigger once, right, development A, you know, you have to do this, then I think the next time when development B comes in, right, and answers the watershed, I think you have to do this because it's a, it's, it is a cumulative effect and you can only analyze as far as you know, right?
Well, that's always been the question of somebody goes first, they get a different, uh, take than the second or third or fourth.
Uh, I mean, but that's, I mean, that's the way using up any consumable, you know, resource is.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
You can't, you know, you can't go on using it forever.
Ultimately, the DRB will have to make that call, um, but I think what this commission could do is either recommend that they listen to the, you know, the suggestions that Kate and Meg and Bob, uh, made, um, or take proactive action and say, hey, we did a bunch of stormwater studies in the early 2000, you know, 2010, 2012, 2014, um, maybe it was time we do another one and, and leverage that data and, and do it ourselves, you know? Anticipate what these projects might look like in terms of their build-out and, and do some, do some modeling to see what the cumulative effects are. It will still suffer from the lack of data, you know, uh.
But as, as Joe says, it could be added to as these projects are. But as Joe says, it could be added to as these projects are done, and it would need to be.
It needs to be added to.
I mean, this is something we absolutely have to stay on top of, because it would be so short-sighted to slack off on this, because as the letter pointed out, and as we made, when we redid our stormwater regulations, if we don't stay on top of this, we are all gonna pay big time. It is gonna be so freaking expensive that we just have to, you know, really need as clear a picture as possible, so...
But don't you think the DRB is qualified to make that decision? I don't think it's our place to tell them. If we wanna change some rules, fine, but I think they're perfectly qualified to decide.
Absolutely, but they need the data, and we can...
Well, they can get the data. There's, Alex just said, they can hire an engineer, a qualified person.
We might be able to...
They're capable of doing that.
We could not.
I don't think they need us sticking our nose in, personally.
Well, I think there's a difference between telling them to do it and encouraging them to do it, and I think we should encourage them to look at this information that the Conservation Commission has brought to their attention.
They can look at it.
I'm just saying, we should join with the Conservation Commission and say, "Yeah, we think that's important that you pay attention to."
But we could also prime that pump, and I'm thinking out loud here, Marie, but if we paid to have an expert like someone from Mylton and McBroom come up with a protocol for doing the evaluation, and then said, "All you have to do, DRB or applicant in the future, is take this, take this protocol with these certain assumptions, and to the extent that you have better data now, because it's, your project has a fleshed-out stormwater plan, plug it into that," and then maybe it would be easier for the DRB and applicants to...
That's just another project for us to work on, is that what we wanna do?
Well, that's a good question, yes.
There you go.
I was thinking of the municipal planning grant that we, you know, apply for.
But it's another project for us to start on, which may not get done in time for the timeliness of what the DRB's working on.
That is true.
But it may get done in time, I mean, that's prediction.
So, how time-consuming would that be to do?
I don't know, to be honest with you. I haven't really thought this through all the way, I was just trying to be sympathetic to the suggestion and think about where we could find which board and which funding source might be there to help make something like that happen, you know, whether that would be through the DRB where we bill an applicant, or whether that would be through the Planning Commission where we go find a grant.
I thought we always had money in the budget to hire an engineer when one was needed. That was done years ago.
Yeah, we do have, but it's small. We have 750 bucks, I think, in the budget each year.
That's not very much.
That's not much.
We need more, so maybe we need to think about that when our budget comes up again.
Yeah, but, I mean, the regulations already, you know, give the town the latitude to require that an independent consultant be hired. I mean, we thought about that previously. Like it or not, that's the funding mechanism, right, for these sorts of things. This commission doesn't generally, right, make recommendations, the DRB generally, our regulations are recommendations, but it's not unheard of that we, you know, we've done it before. We have done it, not always by unanimous consent, but we have done this, right, where we felt that the issues were really important, right, and longstanding, and maybe went beyond, right, a single application that the DRB may be hearing today, right? And, you know, if I'm on the DRB, I'm kinda gonna concentrate one decision at a time. And this is a case where that may not be the best long-term, cost-wise, you know, position for the town. And we're the Planning Commission, we're supposed to think longer term. So, I don't think this is unreasonable to, you know, to write a recommendation letter. Can't tell the DRB what to do, but we can, you know, recommend that they consider this.
Maybe Alex spends a little time trying to put together what process could be used to get the funding and to integrate it into the various applications. I mean, Alex said, "I haven't even thought about it."
The "funding" in quotes is there, right? It's a requirement under the regulations that if the DRB, right, believes that an independent assessment is necessary, that a consultant will be hired and the applicant will pay for it.
Right.
The funding is there, right? Developer may not like it, but that's what this board, after long, you know, long deliberation, came up with.
Right. So... Do you wanna talk about this at greater length in another meeting and give me instructions, or you think you're getting somewhere and wanna give me instructions tonight?
Are you recommending that we write a letter, Joe?
Yes, I am.
I agree.
Could we ask you, Alex, to draft a brief letter and we could look at it next time?
Sure. I can do that.
Awesomeness, any other business or correspondence?
Only that the United Church is celebrating 100 years this year, and pillar of the community that they are, and as a part of that, they are talking about doing something different with the green space behind the church, which has been a soccer field for a very long time, and apparently is not going to be a soccer field anymore, or at least not all of it. So, I just wanted to give you a heads-up that they're having those conversations and that they might be, you know, announcing an effort to plan for that as a part of their centennial celebrations next month. And Phil Pouch, who's involved in the church, reached out to me and just said, you know, "Do you have any ideas from the town's standpoint?" And I said, "Yes," and so I got an invite to go to their, one of their meetings where they're talking about that next week. So, I'll get back to you. I don't wanna speak for them, I just wanted to let you know that they're thinking about that stuff, and it's kind of exciting, you know, to think about what...
Some sort of development, is that what you mean?
Like a casino or something?
Yeah.
Along with the whole...
To be honest with you, that's, you could probably understand my bent, that's immediately where I went with it.
Yeah, right.
Hey, you can do some affordable housing.
Similar minds, you know?
That's not what, that's not what the initial thoughts were. I think they were thinking initially of like, maybe a different sort of green space, perhaps some more contemplative space, maybe garden space, you know, possibly some stormwater treatment features that could factor into those kinds of use. I think they're thinking more...
Not just for children, more inclusive of the...
Inclusive and peaceful and in keeping with the use that is, you know, the church and its sort of spiritual side. But again, they haven't, they haven't actually met as a group to talk about it, and they're doing that next week, so, you know, it could go anywhere, but...
You'll keep us informed.
I'll keep you informed.
Fantastic. All right, if that's it, then we are all done. Thank you, everybody.